I think that the time is to start second session of this conference. First of all, I thank to the organizers to organize this event using this online conference possibility. And also, I thank to the Professor Wang and Professor Komos for nice lecture. We expect to have more good lectures. It is my pleasure to start with Professor Zacharo, who is our collaborator for a long period. And we published many nice papers with Professor Zacharo. So Professor Zacharo will talk about test of gravity theories with black hole observations. Professor Zacharo, please.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you very much. I'm waiting for my screen to present.
Okay.
Could I start?
Yeah, of course, please start.
So it's I'm very happy to learn one week ago that this last Nobel Prize was given to people who studied black holes. So and also I was reminding some interesting encounters with different people, including people from Serbia and other people who are investigating black holes. So and as an example, I was reminding that I visited Serbia the first time 18 years ago, when it was a so-called Yugoslavian conference. Uh, Yugoslavian conference, Yugoslavian astronomical conference. And I presented talk here there. Do you see my screen or not?
Not, could you, could you, could you share the screen?
Again?
Yes, again.
I was sharing my screen.
Now is okay, now is okay, only full screen.
Yes, it's full screen, is visible? Ah, okay. Is visible now?
We can see, but can you put?
Yes, yes. Could I move, do you see it or not?
We can see it, but could you, could you put on the full screen the presentation?
It's full screen now, it's full screen.
Okay, okay.
Because probably there is some delay. So that is some slide poster from this conference, when I visited Belgrade the first time in my life, and it was 18 years ago. And also after this conference, I wrote proceedings for this conference. And it's about it, my report was about gravitational micro lensing and the applications of gravitational lensing. But interesting thing that is according to my view, it was impact of this paper because famous theorist Stephen Weinberg wrote book on cosmology. And he quoted my paper, which was published in the publication of Astronomical Observatory in Belgrade 18 years ago. So but again, I'm telling you that this was very pleasant to know one week ago that Nobel Prize was given to people who studied black holes. And also important thing in press release of Nobel Prize Committee, they said that of course, they decided to give these people, to give these people this prize. But it's important to, to continue development of gravity, gravity under extreme conditions in immediate vicinity of black hole. So it means study is going on, studies are going on. So that is outline of my talk references. But important thing that also what is very important and attractive circumstances is general relativity started to be king. So because three last Nobel Prize in last four years was given to people who studied black holes in some content. So for instance, in 2017, Liger people got Nobel Prize. In 2019, peoples got Nobel Prize for investigation in cosmology. And the last prize also for studies of black holes. So.
Sasha, sorry, Sasha, sorry. We cannot see that you're changing slides. We see only the first slide.
Only first slide?
Yes.
So I don't know how to proceed. So but in this case, I will escape full screen option. And also because it's I know that sometimes it's.
Now, now we can see the next, now we can see, yes.
Now it's because I know that sometimes zooms at this, this option. So it's a problem with a full screen option.
Okay.
So thank you very much for this. So but important thing that is when Penrose gave interview about his studies in this direction, he mentioned that the one of the key concept to prove theorem about existence of black holes in nature was a concept of trapped surface. And he also reminded all the circumstances to find this solution, to find proof of theorem. So but now, this set of theorems is called usually is calling like Penrose-Hawking theorems about singularity. So and I collected a couple of interesting pictures from due to this circumstances. It's just recent picture from Oxford, United Kingdom. So with Penrose and Penrose is staying at the place, it's a so-called Penrose theory. And also he designed this mask in these circumstances. So it's a recent also report of Penrose in Rome. And also that is his theorem about existence of singularity. But important thing that there are some assumptions or conditions for each theorem. So it's because it's because when people are saying that black holes must exist, they, they have to keep in mind that there are conditions of theorems. And also Penrose listed conditions of this theorem to prove it. And also this picture. And also this picture about tilt, so captured trapped surface, it's also is shown here. So what is also interesting thing that all people started to be very excited after this result about existence of black holes in nature. And even director Moscow State University said that Penrose theorem put the end to the debate about the possibility of the real existence of black holes, the disputes were over. The statement is but also, as I noted, the statement is correct only in the case when you could check the theorem conditions. But it's very hard to check conditions for Penrose theorem, because in reality, it's very hard to check conditions for stress energy tensor, to satisfy assumptions of Penrose theorem. For instance, around nine years ago, when I went to physical department of Moscow State University to, to deliver talk about existence of black holes, I found the following article in Wall newspaper, that is black holes in consequence of black failure in knowledge of mathematics. So it was not very simple birth of this concept. So sorry. And also that is one of the Nobel Prize recipient, Reinfeldt-Gensel. It's another picture with him. And also I borrowed some picture with recent photos of this group. Because you know, now gravity interferometer is in action. And here you see Reinfeldt-Gensel, Frank Eisenhower, his PI of gravity experiment. And also one of the, let us say, leaders of this, this group is Stefan Gilson. So but also one recipient is of this prize is Andrea Getz. It's different pictures of this, this lady. And also recently, he wrote interesting booklet for young female astronomer. You can be a woman astronomer, written by Andrea Getz. Important thing that there is very strong violence of gender balance in physics. So because Andrea Getz is only fourth woman, so who got Nobel Prize against more than 200 men. So percentage of, let us say, a woman recipient of Nobel Prize is less than 1.5%. So but now, then this tendency is slightly improving. So because a few years ago, one lady also got Nobel Prize. But also some sentences of Andrea Getz, you also, they may be very interesting also. I will skip some detail, but what about results of Genzel and Getz groups? Practically, as Hooke tried to prove, let us say, gravity law from Kepler laws, it's practically picture from written drawing, but Hooke hand. So similarly, astronomer tried to reproduce gravity law from observations of bright stars near the galactic center. So and here, scientific conference play very important role in, let us say, interchanges of scientist, in particular conferences on general relativity. Here you see picture from conference organizing in Wassa and Yablon and Neil Wassa. And here you could find Roy Patrick Ker, when he practically this period, he found his famous solution, which could describe rotating black holes. But sometimes even famous magazines like Nature could write articles that black holes do not exist in nature, but because it has to be described with quantum gravity. And also recently, Kipser, also Nobel Prize winner, wrote this paper about interstellar and physics of interstellar. And here he showed the most important people who contributed a lot in great in black hole physics. So but one of the first, but there are in spite of proofs of existence of black holes, there are many skeptics in codes in content of physical existence of black holes in nature. And one of the skeptics was Albert Einstein. He in 1939, he published article when he said that results of this study is clear understanding that black, that Schwarzschild singularity do not exist in nature. So because it's he wanted to try to simulate Schwarzschild metric with moving particles. And he said that there is no solution of this, of this problem. But also he concluded his conclusion was much more general than, than his investigation. And he concluded that Schwarzschild singularity do not exist in nature. It means Schwarzschild solutions do not describe physical reality. And practically, these conclusions were repeated by Peter Bergman, he was Einstein assistant. And also he said the same things in his studies. In spite of that, physicists believed that there are black holes in centers of many galaxy. For instance, one relatively recent review on the issue. But also the people listed estimates of black holes mass for different objects. And also one of the opportunity to evaluate mass were in consideration of bright stars near the galactic center. That is picture from this observations of this, these two groups. So let us continue. But important issue to, to let us say, to discover properties of bright stars were done with so-called adaptive optics. So adaptive optics is based on mathematical theory of turbulence, which was introduced by famous Soviet mathematician Kolmogorov. And also did after that, these studies were continued by Obuchov and Tatarsky. And practically, Tatarsky went to United States and he helped to realize these ideas and to create really, really telescopes with adaptive optics. And here you see also famous scientist Charles Townes, he was, let us say, leader of studies of Reinfeldt-Gensel. Charles Townes was Nobel Prize winner in 1964 for laser and laser, let us say, construction. So but after that, he used his skill not only for to observe lasers in nature, for instance, in the galactic center, but also lasers are very important component to build adaptive optic techniques. Because it's also picture of Townes. And also you could find relatively old review by Genzel and Townes on the, let us say, nucleus of our galaxy about the galactic center. And also that is Nobel Prize Committee put also some picture to illustrate adaptive optics technique to improve wave front for to exclude influence of turbulence in atmosphere. People use laser so to create so-called artificial guide star, just to correct wave front. And after that, this telescope got very nice angle resolution. So for instance, here is illustration how efficient so-called adaptive optics technique, I mean, thirty meters telescope in comparison with current VLT. So and also keck telescope, here you see picture of keck telescope and also you have laser, laser light just to create artificial guide stars. It's also picture for different large telescope in the world, which are under construction and also which are existing now. So that is picture of this, this bright stars. And also important thing that eight years ago, Genzel and Getz got Crawford Prize for astronomy. Each three years, the most, let us say, famous astronomers got this prize. Practically, it's like precursor of, of Nobel Prize. And practically Crawford Prize is a half of Nobel Prize. If you keep in mind that Genzel and Getz got one quarter of Nobel Prize for their studies in practically the same money equivalent for this. But four years ago, two people also got Nobel, not Nobel, but Crawford Prize, Roger Blandford and Roy Patrick Ker. But also we are very proud that Genzel and Getz group, people from this group knew our papers and also they quoted it. It's one, one paper which was published many years ago. And also important thing that second, second author of this paper was Salim. He was, I didn't know, but after lecture of Yodin, I have learned that he's Almni from Belgrade University. So also they and other group is Genzel group, also they quoted our paper about this subject. Because in this paper, paper, so again, this picture of this trajectory, but, but you know, European extremely large telescope is now under construction. And also one of the problem in the booklet about this telescope is one of the goal of this telescope just to improve our knowledge about trajectory of bright stars, S2 star in particular in this telescope. That is BLT telescopes, but it's target for gravity, which is now under construction. But you see, two years ago, you see gravity said that is this, they reach precision around a few tens microsecond, is excellent precision, it's in 100,000 times better than in presence of atmosphere. What about our previous studies about influence of extended concentration on trajectories of bright stars? Why we studied this paper many years ago? Because astroparticle physicists are saying since there is gamma radiation from the galactic center, it has to be some concentration of dark matter at the galactic center. But it cannot be too much mass inside trajectory of bright stars, because otherwise we could spoil this trajectory of bright stars. And if you consider this, for instance, five percent of mass in is in dark matter concentration, in this case, you could spoil this orbit. But if 50% of mass in, I mean, it's in this case, it's completely different trajectory. So in this case, we could constrain some models of dark matter concentration based on analysis of trajectory of bright stars. And so we could reject some conventional model of dark matter concentration for the galactic center based on these observations. Around 10 years ago, we started to analyze, to constrain alternative theories of gravity based on observations of bright stars. It's just illustration that will be in the case of some, let us say, FR theory of gravity, when FR is R and theory, in this case, we could constrain this theories of gravity. And later, we also constrain Yukawa potential, because it's also interesting thing that we could constrain Yukawa potential and parameters of Yukawa potential on, on, so from observations of bright stars. It means that these nice observations of bright stars at the galactic center not only confirm predictions of general relativity, but they also could constrain even now, could constrain alternative theories of gravity. But also interesting subject is massive theories of gravity. Why? Because even at the first publication of Liger, when they reported about discovery of binary black holes and discovery of black holes, binary black holes and discovery gravitational waves, they also found constraint on mass of graviton. But surprisingly, we could, that is much, well, so much, Liger and Virgo paper, and also they found that mass of graviton should be 10 to the minus, 10 to the minus 22 EV. So that is constraint of Liger. So but surprisingly, so we could, later, they slightly improved this estimate. But later, we found, we found that analyzing trajectory of bright stars, we could reach only the same constraint of graviton mass as this one. But also we are very proud that both collaborations, I mean, Keck and VLT collaborations also paid attention on our studies. And they, for instance, in three years ago, his, Getz and others also found slightly better estimate on graviton mass based on new, on their new data. So it means our studies had significant impact, for instance, that is review about graviton mass. And also important thing that observers pay attention on our studies in this direction. But that is his and other papers, that is, I said about this result. But moreover, two years ago, we considered opportunities slightly improved, improve graviton mass from future observations of bright stars. In this case, it's possible to be, to be done, but in the case if come, let us say, prediction of general relativity will be confirmed. So I will skip these details, it's simply analytical calculation for this issue. But important thing that conclusions are the following ones. So we could say that in the future, with observations of bright stars, we could slightly improve current estimate of graviton mass, which were done from observations of Liger. But also some theories predicted that it may be, let us say, Rassner-Nerst metric for black hole, where charge is has not electric origin, but due to some complications of theory, some interaction of scholar and tensor field. So also for this case, we could get analytical conclusions and estimate on parameter of theory even now. It's the same, we could estimate lambda term in metric if it exists. I will skip these details. But also, because I would like to mention very important discovery, recent discovery of gravity. So because first, gravity reported, they discovered, let us say, prediction of general relativity for gravitational redshift. Here, that is, that is blue line corresponds to Newtonian theory, but red line corresponds to general relativity. First post-Newtonian correction for gravitational redshift for S2 star near its periscenter passage, which was done in May 2018. So but it's excellent discovery, because practically, they are saying that gravity theory at the galactic center has to be general relativity. Because Newtonian theory is not, not good to describe, that is picture, that is passage of, that is May 19, 2018. So but later on, gravity slightly corrected the result about distance to the black hole mass and also F1 corresponds to general relativity, F0 corresponds to Newtonian theory. And practically, later on, after few months, Keck Group, it's because you know, Keck Group leader is Andrea Getz, practically, they obtained very similar results. So practically, it's joint confirmations of this, of these results. But also important thing that scholar field, so we could investigate deviation from general relativity. And we could constrain many alternative theories of gravity. Also this paper was published two years ago by Gravity Collaboration. And also with active participants of Portuguese scientists, including some students from Vitor Cardozo. And important thing that this, this paper, observer from observer, observer group of observers, they quoted nine of our paper in this list, as it was noted by Yodin in the introductory talk. But also important thing that recently, few months ago, gravity finally confirmed predictions of general relativity about relativistic precision, precision of S2. It's artist view of precision, because. It's artist view of precision because precision is very small. It's, it's not visible in the picture, but just to increase this, this factor. So this artist showed this picture. So few months ago, that is, they showed that is practically everything has to be, this is from this picture, you could see, everything has to be very close to general relativity as it was shown here. So and also in this case, again, if F one is a general relativity, uh, F zero is Newtonian theory, but parametric post-Newtonian parameter in general relativity have to, have to be one. So you could find that is everything is very consistent with general relativity. But also important thing that recently, uh, KIC group showed that it's possible to check variation of fundamental constant, including fine structure constant from observations of bright stars near the passage of, of periscenter. So they also, but also here I would like to note that we are also very proud that there is so-called particle data group, when they listed all properties of elementary particles. And here you could find that they quoted our paper about existence of estimate on graviton mass from trajectories of bright stars. So, uh, so concluding, because time is very limiting, so I would like to leave some time for questions. So the most important, you know, a couple of years ago, Clifford Will wrote book is title, Was Einstein Right?, is question mark. And after that, Timor Damour wrote article, Was Einstein One Hundred Percent Right? So and so now we could say that taking into account all experiments and observations, including observations of bright stars at the moment, we could say that Einstein was one hundred percent right. And we are also very proud that we put several bricks in the great wall of knowledge about black hole at the galactic center. So but you see is again, it's, I'm repeating this conclusion here. And also you see, uh, important thing that also probably here, I would like to, to note that, to note that studies of great mathematician like Kalmagorov and Ross could give, to, could have giant practical impact on physics and technology. Because sometimes official are saying, what about practical benefit from mathematical studies? You see, but practically that is confirm, that is proof of benefit for scientific and also more practically even for technological community importance of studies in mathematics. Because it's, I know that is astronomical department is a part of faculty of mathematics. Thank you very much for your attention. I have a few minutes for questions.
Thank you, Professor Zaharo. Now I open the talk for comments and questions. Do we have some questions? I cannot see if someone is raising hand. If no questions, I have really one question. First of all, one comment. It is nice that I see also in some papers that they quoted, cited your papers in collaboration with the group of, uh, Jovanovic-Borka and Borka-Jovanovic. And it is, it is very nice to see that, that the paper are quoted in some, how to say, uh, as you said, you, 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 uh, put a brick in, in the, in the wall of knowledge about gravity, gravitation and graviton. So question is, you mentioned that you applied Yukawa potential to explain motion of stars in center of our galaxy. I'm right?
Yes, yes, it's true. Because it's just, just, just.
Question is, you said that Einstein theory is hundred percent right. Einstein was hundred percent right. And why you use Yukawa potential to, to explain because we have.
Okay, very, very, very good question. So Einstein theory is one hundred percent right. But important thing that there are also, let us say, two important concerns in general, in general relativistic approach, namely dark matter and dark energy. And especially in dark energy, dark matter. So there is very slow progress in this direction because early people thought that they easily could, let us say, fund this, let us say, particles who literally really components of dark matter. In this case, how to, let us say, to have self, let us say, consistent theory for everything? And one of the opportunity to, to explain dark matter and dark energy phenomena is to introduce another gravity law. So because if, because in principle, who knows? Yeah, because it may be not component like dark matter, but it may be another gravity law. In this direction, people introduce it many theories of gravity. And but important thing that this including Yukawa one. So but that is not only one theory, but class of theories have Yukawa limit in weak field approximation. But in this case, we have to check parameters of Yukawa theory, which was generated from this general theories of general alternatives for general relativity. But of course, you, in this case, it's unavoidable constraint of parameters of Yukawa theory from these observations. So it means it's, it's quite normal business. And also gravity people investigated so many other theories of gravity in this direction. And also initial goal of alternative theories of gravity now is to explain dark matter and dark energy phenomenon. But of course, they're saying we are the beginning, so there are many inconsistencies and problems, but people are moving also in this direction. But who knows? But important thing that there are very, so serious constraints on this theory. But also here, you see, I will use this opportunity since I have a few minutes more. So I was very proud when I published article about gravitational microlensing after proceedings of thirteen, uh, Yugoslavian conference, astronomical conference in two thousand two. But Steven Weinberg wrote that this was an interesting paper in this direction and he quoted it and also its publication of Astronomical Observatory of Belgrade. It means, so it means I, we put some bricks again in this direction, in this building, in, in building of cosmology because it's book, it was book on cosmology. And also is, I think it's very important, like also advertisement of, of, let us say, this institution and scientific life and studies in this institution. I think it's very important also, for me at least.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Professor Zaharo. So do we have some questions more? If not, I thank you very much once.
Okay, thank you, thank you again, thank you again, thank you very much.
We are moving to the next speaker of this session, Asad Askar. Asker, could you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
How are you? Fine?
I'm good. I'm talking to you.
Nice to see you again and pleasure to, to see you at our conference. Could you share the, the screen with us?
Uh, yes, it says that I have to wait for the other participant to stop sharing. Ah, yes, now I can share, perfect.
So it's nice to see you and, uh, again, and I hope to see you some in normal situation. So the talk is dynamical formation of gravitational wave sources. Asad, please.
Yeah, thank you so much, Luca. And I'd also like to thank the organizers for giving me the opportunity to talk to all of you. Having spent a semester in Belgrade as a master student almost nine years ago, it's really a pleasure to be here and to talk to everyone. So my name is Abbas Asker and I'm a postdoctoral researcher at Lind Observatory in Sweden. Today I'll be talking about dynamical formation of gravitational wave sources with an emphasis on black holes. So yeah, starting off, just to give you a quick recap of what we know about gravitational wave detections from the Ligo-Verga collaboration so far. So far we've seen about twelve binary black holes that have been detected and announced, which puts a constraint on the merger rate of about ten to a hundred odd events per gigaparsec cube per year. And yeah, it's really interesting, in five years of gravitational wave astronomy, we know more about the demographics of these stellar black holes more than we did from many years of electromagnetic observations. And additionally, two merging neutron stars and one black hole, two merging neutron stars have also been detected and one black hole detection with a object in what is known as this mass gap has also been seen. But what I'm really interested in and what I'd like to talk about today is what is the astrophysical origin of these objects that are being observed? So there are a few possible answers, the few channels to make such sources. One is the isolated binary evolution channel where you have two stars in a binary and then they evolve and become two compact objects which can then merge due to gravitational wave radiation. The other idea is that you can form these sources in dense dynamical systems and I'll get to what they are in a minute. And there are also other ideas where you might make them in triple systems or you could form them in discs of active galactic nuclei. And also it's possible that some of these, that these black holes could be primordial black holes that formed on in the very early universe. But I'll be talking about dynamical formation, particularly in dense stellar environments. And what I mean by dense stellar environments are systems where stars are packed closely together. So star clusters come in some variety. You have open young and massive clusters. These have masses between a hundred to up to a ten to the four solar masses. They're quite compact and they have central densities of the order of about a thousand to about, uh, ten thousand solar mass per cubic parsec. There, for open clusters, we see, uh, they're typically young and they're mostly in the discs, found in discs of galaxies. And a lot of star formation is hard to take place in open and young clusters. Uh, and there've been a lot of studies that have looked into what their contribution to the merger rate would be for such, for binding stem as binding black holes. And usually these numbers come about to fifty and a hundred gigaparsec cube with some very, per year, assuming some very favorable assumptions. The other clusters that I particularly work on are globular clusters. These are rare. We, in the Milky Way, we have about a hundred and fifty such clusters, mostly orbiting around in the halo, a few in the bulge. They can have masses up to a million solar masses and they are also quite compact and their central densities can be very high of the order ten to the five solar masses per cubic parsec or more. Typically they are old, about ten giga years or older, but there are a few younger ones in the bulge. Uh, and by, and being less abundant than open clusters, the estimated merger rate for their contribution to the estimated merger rate is about five to fifteen events per gigaparsec cube per year. And another branch of clusters that I'll be talking about today are nuclear stellar clusters. These are related, these are found at the nuclei of galaxies and they can also be very massive, going up to ten to the eight solar masses and also extremely compact and having central densities as high as ten to the seven solar masses per cubic parsec. It's usually you see an eight spread in their stars. And because you usually have, you will have one nuclear star cluster per galaxy, their event rates is about, the event rate for binary black holes in these sources is estimated to be by one to ten gigaparsec cube per year. So in my talk today, I want to address four key questions. Essentially, what happens to black holes in stellar clusters? Who, who, are they retained? What's the dynamics of them? And also what are the processes which lead to the formation of binary black holes in these star clusters? And what, how much can they contribute to the merger rate that we can detect through these ground-based observatories? And lastly, I want to talk about intermediate mass black holes and whether they can be formed in dense stellar clusters. And a recent project I'm working on and where we think, where we consider whether such intermediate mass black holes could go on to see supermassive black holes, which you may find interesting. So let's talk about stellar blast black holes first. So essentially, black holes form from the evolution of the most massive stars. Stars typically more massive than twenty solar masses. And these evolved pretty quickly within four to, within a few tens of mega years. And if you assume a typical initial mass function for every thousand stars, you'd expect about two black holes to form. So if you have a million stars in your cluster initially, you can expect to form about two thousand, uh, black holes. But black hole retention in stellar clusters is a bit tricky because when black holes they're born, they might receive a natal kick. And this natal kick might be high enough, larger than the escape velocity of the cluster so that the black hole is ejected out. And then also the escape velocity of the stellar cluster initially is also a bit uncertain, particularly with these globulars, they form very early on. If they're initially more dense, then this escape velocity would be higher. But coming to natal kicks, the point is that when the massive star ends its life, there's a lot of uncertainty how exactly that happens, whether it is a full supernova or whether you can have some mass falling back onto the black hole. And this has consequences on the natal kicks it could receive. So with core collapse supernova, you can get an asymmetry in the mass ejection. There could also be neutrino emission in this, there are asymmetries. And this might result in a kick in the, uh, kick for the newly formed compact object. And if you look at the pulsars in the Milky Way, they seem to be moving very fast. So from their proper motions, their velocities are somewhere between two hundred to a thousand kilometers per second. And it is thought that these high velocities are required following the supernova event. For black holes, it's not exactly clear how, what they natal kick start. There are a few possibilities that in low metallicity environments during the evolution of the star, not a lot of masses lost through winds. So the final object, then it doesn't really go in supernova entirely, some mass fallbacks and this could decrease the kick that you, that the final black hole has. So a lot of people working on stellar evolution and binary evolution as well as star cluster evolution, use different prescriptions for these kicks. And one idea is that you kick, you make these kicks low by assuming momentum conservation because the mass of the black hole is larger than a neutron star. It, this can reduce the kick. But essentially these kicks, but then depend on the final black hole mass, which in turn depends on many things like the initial mass, metallicity, winds, and also what sort of supernova model you exactly choose. So here I'm going to show some results from some of the simulations I've been working with, using this code called markup, which is a kitchen sink type code where you have treatment for relaxation, you have prescriptions for stellar and binary evolution for some strong interactions, you do direct and body simulations. And here are two models which have exactly the same number of stars, the same metallicity, but the only thing different in these runs is that we are assigning different kicks to the black holes. So if I give the kicks, if I give a black hole the same kicks as neutron stars, which is sampled from this sort of a distribution, uh, with a, with a real velocity of about three to four hundred kilometers per second, then what happens is if you follow the red line here, the total number of black holes in the clusters, they fall very quickly after they form. So then the retention fraction goes low. But if you scale these kicks by fallback, then you can retain a significant number of black holes. So the key point is that the retention of black holes in globular clusters can be as high as fifty-five percent to, and as to as one percent depending on how you compute these kicks. Recently, there has been some observations of stellar black holes in the cluster, particularly in the last decade. Now there's evidence from accretion black holes in binary systems that you see in X-ray and radio observations. And more interesting, even detached black holes in binaries have been detected through very nice radial velocity measurements that have only been made possible through new instruments like Muse. And three black holes have been detected in at least, in just one globular cluster using this method. So it seems that some of these black holes can retain black holes even up to a half a diamond. These clusters are quite old. So this does indicate that a fraction of black holes do survive in the clusters despite the natal kicks. So let's assume that we have black holes in the, in our cluster, we keep them in there. What happens to black holes is that they are surrounded in a sea of lower mass stars and then due to dynamical friction, being the more heavier objects, they gradually sink to the center of the cluster. Once they are in the center of the cluster, there they can go chaotic interactions. So you can have, they can form binary systems, they can undergo binary single and binary binary interactions. And one efficient way of forming binary black holes is to exchange. And one efficient way of forming binary black holes is to exchange encounters. So imagine if I have a black hole in a binary system with a star and another black hole comes by and this binary interacts, then many of the occasions, the lower mass star will be ejected out and then you'll end up with a black hole, black hole binary. And interestingly, my just got between black holes can also occur during these interactions. Another thing that happens is that if you have a binary black hole and it's interacting with surrounding stars, it can give some of its binding energy to the, to the other star or the black hole and this can harden your binary. And this is important because you might have many binding black holes, but they might not merge due to gravitational wave radiation because they are so further apart. But such interactions can really bring the binary components closer. And the efficiency of the gravitational wave radiation and the time it takes for the merger depends on this binary separation. The lower it is, the faster the objects can merge. And it also depends on the eccentricity, the more eccentric the binary is, the more, more quickly you can merge due to gravitational wave radiation. So then another important consequence of these dynamical interactions is that you can also eject type binding black holes out of the cluster due to dynamical recoil. So if I have a single star interacting or a black hole interacting with a binding black hole, such interactions can also result in a dynamical kick which can then eject you out of the clusters. And essentially what's taught is that black hole population in clusters deplete with time. Black holes, they act as an energy source for the surrounding stars because they're all in this, located in the centers. They are interacting with stars, giving their energy to these stars, particularly the binaries. And this can really expand out the cluster. But because they are so densely packed in the core, they are, you can have more interactions between them. And gradually they'll start depleting each, kicking each other out due to such interactions. And essentially the idea is that initially dense clusters will have more such interactions because of their shorter relaxation time and this will be, result in a faster depletion of black holes. And less dense clusters would have fewer interactions, so then the black hole depletion will be stored. So the idea is that initially dense clusters that are dynamically older, meaning that they have undergone many relaxations, produce more useful binding black holes. And just to illustrate this point, I'll show you some results from numerical simulations. So these are the same MACHUP simulations I talked about earlier. Here we show the time and the evolution of the total number of black holes in the cluster. The orange line here is the least dense initial model and the black line here is the densest initial model. All other properties of these models are roughly the same. So what we find is that the least dense model keeps its black holes for a long time because it's dynamically younger. It has undergone few relaxations up up to, even up to a hub of time, you can still have a few hundred black holes in there. Whereas in the densest models, you deplete your black hole populations faster. So in the first few giga year of the evolution, you have lost a significant amount of the black holes. As far as binding black holes are concerned, so here we show the total number of binding black holes in the cluster versus time. Again, for those three models that the, again, here we find that these binaries are being constantly created and destroyed or being ejected from the cluster. But the denser model is producing more such binaries throughout the evolution of the cluster. And the key point then here is in this final figure that if you look at the semi-major axis distribution of the bind, of the binding black holes that are escaping from the cluster, we find that the densest model produce, produces binaries which have the smallest semi-major axis, more smaller semi-major axis distribution compared to the least dense, the lesser denser models. And then these binary black holes ejected from such clusters are more likely to merge due to gravitational wave within a half a time. So from this model alone, we find about 26 such merging binary black holes out of an 81 which escaped. Whereas from the least dense one, you only get about 9% that would merge within a half a time. So the initial size and density of the cluster really helps determine how many useful binding black holes it can produce. By useful, I mean the ones that will merge within a half a time. So we really looked at this systematically. We carried out about 2,000 simulations of star clusters. And in about 1,000, we had no black hole, natal kick, so high retention. So from these thousand models, we found about 17,000 useful binding black holes which escaped the cluster and roughly about 3,500 which merged inside the cluster. What we found was that most of the mergers inside the cluster, they occur very early on, within the first giga year of the cluster evolution. And also the most of the escape, as they will merge within a giga year, but then you see this long tail going up to later times. So yeah, escapeurs can contribute to binding mergers at later times. So here I want to show an example of how such a binding black hole forms in the cluster. So in these simulations, we, in this example, you have two stars in the cluster, about 30 solar masses which are single. They form black holes of about 20, 25 solar masses. And these black holes then eventually undergo many dynamical interactions, but eventually they find each other in a binary, binary interaction, which also ejects the binding from the cluster. But if you look at the properties of the escaping black hole binary at this point, you, its separation is of about 21 solar radii and it has an eccentricity of about 0.7. And it will merge within about 63 mega years as such a, such a binding can merge within 63 mega years due to gravitational wave radiation. But so this is one of the examples of how such a binding can form in a cluster. So from this study, we also looked at how we could estimate the local merger rate. And this is done for, this is done by having some idea of about what the globular cluster for star formation rate was and how this evolves with redshift. And essentially we then found that locally, we could expect about five and a half such mergers per giga, in the local volume per year. And this is consistent with the independent, some other studies that have looked into this. Really the upper limits for the globular cluster contribution is about 15 events per gigaparsec cube per year. Here from the data we have, we show the chirp mass distribution as a, and what how it contributes to the rate. And we can see that, yeah, that such dynamically formed sources can explain the observed sources so far. But of course, these distributions also depend a lot on the prescriptions that you have for stellar and binary evolution in your simulations. So a lot of people have also looked into how such rates could evolve with redshift. So with globular clusters, you expect a lot of them to form with a peak in star formation at about 2 to 3, redshift 2 to 3. And given that a lot of these black holes merge very early on in the cluster evolution, you would expect to see a peak at about redshift 3. But there are a few open questions here, such as how much star formation take actually took place in globular clusters. So currently you see that maybe 1% of the galaxy stellar mass is in globular clusters. But it's possible that earlier on, there could have been a higher fraction of stellar mass in clusters which have now disrupted or have been destroyed. So and now I'll just talk about about production of binding black holes in open and young stellar clusters. So you have a higher fraction of star formation taking place in open and young cluster. And unlike job in young clusters and unlike globular clusters, you're not limited to a given epoch. So you are constantly forming these sources. And a lot of studies have looked into this as well and they find that they are even quite efficient at producing binding black holes at higher metallicities compared to isolated binary evolution. And some of these studies also find that many of these mergers take place outside the clusters. And also within these cluster simulations, if you include post Newtonian terms, you can get more mergers inside the cluster during such strong interactions where you count for the angular momentum and energy being taken away by gravitational waves. And if you, if you really optimistically assume that all stars were born in such clusters, you can get merger rates of about 50 to 100 events per gigaparsec cube per year, which is consistent with what, what the estimated rates are from the observations made by Lego and Virgo so far. So now I'll talk a bit about binding black holes and nuclear stellar clusters. So if you really zoom in, do onto the center of a galaxy or in the galactic nucleus, you can find these nuclear, a nuclear star cluster there. These are quite dense, can be as dense as 10 to the seven solar mass per cubic parsec and massive. And there are a few formation scenarios for how these nuclear star clusters get caught there. One idea is that you could have globular clusters that due to dynamical friction ended up in the galactic center or it formed in C2 from gas there. Probably both these formation mechanisms contribute to the formation of nuclear star clusters. And most of them also host a supermassive black hole such as our Milky Way. And it's also estimated that you can have many stellar mass black holes around. And then what you can get is that if you have stellar mass binding black holes in the presence of a distant supermassive black holes, you can get some, cause I, by cause I lead a mechanism, you can then pump up the eccentricity of this binary. And this can really reduce your merger time due to gravitational wave radiation. So typically the merger rates estimated from nuclear star clusters are about 10 events per gigaparsec cube per year. But on the topic of nuclear star clusters, I'll return. I just want to talk about, yeah, here I want to talk about the detection which was announced last month, actually, of this event GW190521, which was a merger between an 85 solar mass black hole and a 66 solar mass black hole, which led to the formation of 142 solar mass black hole. So now this is a pretty interesting event. Because, and it has been getting a lot of attention because this is really seen as the first detection of a low mass intermediate mass black hole. So intermediate mass black holes are in the mass range of about 100 to 100,000 solar masses. And there's a lot of speculation whether these exist or not, but really this is the first evidence for such a black hole. But what's really interesting is that this mass range of one of these black holes is between 65 and 135 solar masses. And usually in stellar and binary evolution, it's really thought that you can produce black holes in this mass range through these processes, essentially due to pair and pulsation and instability supernova. So the idea there is that if you have a evolving massive star, its core gets very hot. And when it gets very hot, the photons in there, the gamma ray photons can decay into electron positron pairs. And suddenly, these photons that are providing radiation pressure against gravitational collapse are just gone from there. And then you can get, the star can collapse and result in a pair instability supernova which may destroy the entire star. So really it's, it's very puzzling how such a black hole could form. So a lot of speculation is that this black hole, this could have been a second generation black hole formed in a dense stellar environment. And by that I mean that it formed from the merger of two smaller black holes and then this bigger black hole acquired a, a black hole partner. But the difficulty in this is that when you merge two black holes, you get a gravitational recoil kick. And I think you'll hear more about this later on. And this recoil kick depends on the mass ratio of the merging black holes and the magnitude and orientation of their spins. So yeah, as you have the boundaries spiraling, your linear momentum is also being carried away. And then as the black holes merge, they will get a recoil kick which can get you out of the, of the host dense environment. So people have looked this in, at this with respect to globular clusters. And assuming what you take for the spins of the black hole, with high spins you can really get, and asymmetries in high spin, you can get very large kicks going up to 1,000 kilometers per second, which would really reduce your retention fraction of your second generation black hole in the cluster. However, if you have lower kicks or lower birth spins as well, then you could even retain up to 50% of those black holes in the cluster. So it really depends on those things. But here I want to talk about the fact that you might have better chances for retaining the second generation black hole in a nuclear star cluster. Because there the escape velocities are higher, they can be of the order of a few hundred kilometers per second. So then you can really keep these black holes which are here. So another question is about this intermediate class black hole formation stellar clusters. There have been many ideas floating around about the possibility of this happening. So one possible way to do this is that if you have a sufficiently dense cluster initially, let's say density is larger than 10 to the five solar masses per cubic parsec. What you can get is that before massive stars evolve, they can sink to the center. And there they might undergo runaway collisions and form a very massive star, which could then potentially in the right circumstances evolve into a stellar mass black hole of a few hundred solar masses. The other possibility is that you have stellar mass black holes that sink to the center of the cluster where they can go runaway mergers forming more massive black holes. However, these recoil kicks then would prevent you from, from retaining the most black hole in the cluster unless the spins are low or the mass ratios are low. Then there are also the side ideas that stellar mass black holes can provoke collisions and mass transfer in such systems. And if you've looked into, so some of these simulations I talked about earlier, these Monte-Carlo simulations of stellar clusters, we see that we can form intermediate mass black holes. So here I show the mass of the most massive black hole in these simulations and how they're evolving with time. And each of this line is a result from a different simulation. So in the very dense one, we do see this runaway collision between stars, which in the right circumstances can give you an intermediate mass black hole. And then in other cases, we see the slow increase of a stellar mass black hole through collisions or mass transfer in binaries or through tidal disruption of stars. And another possibility which has been suggested is that if you have gas around in such clusters, then your stellar mass black holes could accrete some of that gas and become intermediate mass black holes. So one idea that I'm currently working on is this idea of seeding supermassive black holes. So I mentioned that most galaxies contain a supermassive black hole and many contain a nuclear star cluster as well. But in the local universe, there's a galaxy M33, which contains a nuclear star cluster, but it doesn't have a supermassive black hole. So the nuclear star cluster in there is about 2 million solar masses. And really the upper limits on the central black hole are about 1,500 solar masses. So the key question that we wanted to look into the study is what comes first, the supermassive black hole or a nuclear star cluster? And we considered the idea that maybe a supermassive black hole forms after a nuclear stellar cluster. So the idea then is that we build up a nuclear star cluster by throwing together smaller stellar clusters. And then some of these stellar clusters can contain only stars and while others contain an intermediate mass black hole. And we carried out direct end body simulations of such mergers. So we really simulate the final stages of this merger. And we see that after a few hundred mega years, you form, that all the three clusters have merged and you have stars from all the three populations forming a new cluster. So what we wanted to look at is by putting these clusters in different, in IMDH in different configurations inside this cluster, what happens to them and whether we can keep them and how much must they grow to form supermassive black holes? And the intermediate mass black holes that we're considering are of about 1,500 and a few hundred solar masses. And other people have looked into this as well, but they usually have a supermassive black hole in there initially when they do such simulations. So what we found is that we can form in these cases where we have two intermediate mass black holes or more, we can form a binary intermediate massive black hole because the IMDH are more massive than the regular stars, they sink to the center, they form a binary. You've already heard talks of a supermassive black hole binaries. This is really a scaled down version of that. And what we find in these simulations is once they formed a binary within few tens of mega years after sinking to the center, this binary as it interacts with surrounding stars, it hardens with time. And what's even more interesting is that as it hardens, it also pumps up its eccentricity. And we explained this in the paper why that happens. But I won't go into too many details, but the key point is that when the eccentricity gets high, the gravitational wave merger time can significantly decrease. So here we show the 1 minus E versus the semi-major axis of the binary. And really, once you get eccentricities as this high, you can merge a binary within a mega year. So if we now assume that we can merge this, then the, merge these black holes, then we need to see whether we can retain them following the kicks. So really what we find is if, assuming different spin distributions, we find this distribution of the recoil kicks. And essentially you need a low mass ratio if you want to keep the recoil velocities lower than the escape speed of such nuclear star clusters. So yes, what we did then is based on these results, we are now creating, doing the population synthesis where we create a mock population of galaxies containing nuclear star clusters. And then we form the nuclear star cluster by sampling clusters. And then we assign probabilities for these clusters to bling along intermediate mass black holes. So here we show a plot showing the mass of the nuclear star cluster versus the log of the massive black hole versus mass of the massive black hole. And for these black hole masses, we go back to these simulations where we formed in IMDH stellar clusters. So what can happen is that you either have no intermediate mass black hole delivered in your final nuclear star cluster or you have one delivered. or you have one delivered. And if you have one there, that's pretty good because nothing is going to eject this out. So then this can go on to seed the supermassive black hole. But if you have multiple IMGs being delivered, then if you assume that then they will merge to perform a binary and merge properly, then you either end up with one or zero at the end. So here we allow for such mergers and we also allow for growth of these black holes before, over a period of time, assuming a doubling time of about three hundred mega year. This corresponds to about ten percent of the Eddington rate. And then what we find is that we can get a nice spread in the black hole masses as you, depending on what time the IMG was injected. So you'll hear more about how seeds can be grown in the clusters, but this was just an idea that I wanted to present, which is interesting in the context of seeding supermassive black holes and low mass black holes. So yeah, here's my conclusion slide. I'm out of time, so I won't read through everything. But the key idea is that in stellar clusters, you can get dynamics which can form binary black holes. And in some very dense clusters, you can form intermediate mass black holes through runaway mergers. And it may be possible that such intermediate mass black holes could play a role in seeding supermassive black holes. So thank you for your attention and
Thank you Abbas. Thank you. It was a very nice talk. Now I open the lecture for questions, comments.
Sorry, I stopped sharing.
Do we have questions? I cannot see. If not, I have one.
Sure.
So Abbas, you said that if I understood well, somewhere with redshift three, we have some maximum in, in, in the formation of binary black holes.
Yes, yeah.
We want for that. Yes, this.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's a two-pronged reason. So then the first reason is that subject clusters are mostly expected to form with the peak in the stellar formation at about redshift three, right? So and then the other reason comes from this distribution that we find, that most of these merging binary black holes, their merger time is skewed towards very early on from, so here zero is the time when the cluster is born, right? So within the first Giga, few three hundred mega years, you expect many of these binary black holes to merge, right? So then it would make sense that this should coincide with the peak of the time when the clusters formed.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. And also I hope to see you again in Berlin. Remember you, 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 you were good students that I see now, you are good scientists. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And we move to next talk will be given by Miroslav Michic, Supermassive Black Hole Growth and Gravitational Wave Radiation. Miroslav.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. So please, could you share the presentation with us? Nice, nice.
Yeah, okay.
And then I will appear two minutes before the end. Okay.
Okay. So let's see. So to put my talk in the context of what we heard this morning. So I'm going to be talking about something in between what you already heard. We heard talks about supermassive black hole binaries. And just now we heard about stellar black holes and how you can build intermediate mass black hole. So I'm going to talk about something that is in between, that's various growth scenarios for how to grow supermassive black hole. So just to see, okay. Okay, so there are many growth scenarios for supermassive black holes. But I'm going to focus on just two of them. And as you will see, even the most popular models face a lot of problems. Then I'm going to talk about LISA, Laser Interferometer Space Antenna, and how LISA will be able to distinguish between various growth scenarios. Okay, so as I said, I'm going to focus on two competing scenarios. And that's the supermassive black hole growth from stellar remnant black holes. And also a direct collapse of the gas cloud into a supermassive black hole. Another popular model is runaway mergers in stellar clusters. This is something that you just heard about in the previous talk. But this, this model or this scenario can be seen as a subclass of the direct collapse model, where instead of collapsing the entire gas cloud into a supermassive star, you fragment it first. And then the stars merge to form a supermassive star and then supermassive star collapses into a supermassive black hole. So what are these scenarios competing for? Well, they are competing to explain how to form a billion solar mass black hole at redshift seven. This is so early in the formation of the universe that special conditions are required, pretty much no matter which growth scenario you consider. In essence, there is simply not enough time for a black hole to grow that early. I should also give you some nomenclature that I'm going to use. By Eddington limited accretion, I mean accretion at the Eddington limit. Above that is super Eddington accretion, so more than or any ratio larger than one. And above Eddington ratio of ten, we have a hyper Eddington accretion. Of course, there is a big question, how realistic is the creation of any kind of accretion above Eddington limit? But there are ways to produce it. Okay, so let's start with the first one, and that's stellar remnant black hole scenario. These black holes are remnants of population three stars, which form at very high ratio, as high as redshift twenty, thirty. And population three stars form from metal-free clouds, which cool and fragment through molecular hydrogen lines. This process of cooling is not efficient, so first stars form very massive. And being so massive, they live only a couple of millions of years. And the remnants are hundred, let's say ten to a hundred solar mass. Because these numbers vary, I mean, over the years of researching, these numbers have changed. But let's say that you can produce a hundred solar mass black hole, just for the simplicity. Since they form in low-density environments of mini halos, these black holes cannot accrete efficiently. But as halos merge, these first black holes sink to the centers of gas-rich atomic cooling halos, where they can in one of the models at least accrete gas in numerous episodes of, let's say, three to four times the Eddington limit gas secretion. Of course, these episodes of accretion are combined with black holes, the whole merges. So just on that note, in two thousand and fifteen, Smollett posed the question, if we go through dark metal halo merger trees in the early universe, what would be the required accretion rate on average? I say on average because you can imagine that you can have adding to limited episodes of accretion and then you can have a super Eddington or even hyper Eddington episodes. But let's say, let's see, you know, what on, on average should be the required accretion rate for the first black holes to grow to supermassive values? And as it turned out, one does not have to go to hyper Eddington accretion at all. And that a more moderate rate of just three to four times above Eddington limit should be enough to produce supermassive black hole at these high ratios. In some other models, like in Yoshida Toh, two thousand and sixteen, in a very special set of circumstances, let's say if gas around the black hole is very dense, then black holes can accrete rapidly in pretty much one go. With Eddington ratio larger than ten, you produce a supermassive black hole. The second scenario that I want to talk about is the direct collapse black hole model. So these black holes form in gas-rich, high-racial galaxies. And assuming that gas does not cool efficiently, it will collapse into a supermassive star, which then collapses into a massive black hole with around hundred thousand solar masses. These are just some of the references because there's been a lot of work on this subject. That's pretty much because direct collapse model, we can say that that's the one that kick community, astronomical community is betting on to work. And so since this is the case, I'll discuss this model in a bit more detail. So the work is focused on showing in both large and small scale simulations that a very special set of circumstances for the formation of supermassive black hole can be achieved. So these are exactly the opposite conditions from those required in a stellar remnant model. So here you want to prevent gas fragmentation. So for example, here you would need Lyman Werner radiation from the first stars to destroy molecular hydrogen. Or you can destroy molecular hydrogen through collisional dissociation. Another thing you have to do is to keep the gas warm. So again, this is opposite. This can be achieved if dark metal halo mergers are frequent, you know, they are in the early universe. So if they're frequent enough, then gas is constantly stirred and cooling is constantly interrupted. So if all of this works, you would end up with a massive halo with the gas, the temperature around eight thousand kelvins and no molecular hydrogen. Next would be to inefficiently cool the gas cloud through Lyman alpha radiation, for example, while avoiding, avoiding fragmentation until you end up with optically T gas which forms a protostar. Then newly formed protostar would continue to accrete the gas that surrounds it and accrete it rapidly. It would ignite nuclear reactions. And if you avoid UV feedback, it becomes a supermassive star. So soon enough, supermassive star collapses to form a supermassive black hole. So the goal in both scenarios is to produce black hole massive enough. So then the rest of the growth can be achieved with Eddington limited gas secretion. So this first part is a big challenge, challenges you already seen. So how to get to the ten to the five, ten to the six solar masses? After that, it's easy. You can have episodes of Eddington limited gas secretion combined with black hole mergers if necessary. And then you can produce a billion solar masses black holes at, that all observed in phasers at high ratio. But as you already noticed in my talk, there are many problems. In case of the stellar remnant black holes, the first problem would be the gravitational wave recall. This is something that you already heard in the previous talk. So as these black holes in this model form with similar masses, so I mentioned these are hundreds, around hundreds of masses black holes. So even if they accrete some gas, and I mentioned that they cannot accrete efficiently in those early stages of their, of their growth. So we are talking about equal mass mergers or similar mass mergers. In any case, these are going to be high mass ratio mergers. And so in the following mergers of their hosting halos, these black holes will be brought together. They're going to merge also. And since the mass ratios are so similar, the gravitational wave recoil is going to be really, really high. And if you combine that with the fact that the early halos are really low mass, so their gravitational potentials are low. That means that the escape velocity is low. And so there is a big danger that gravitational wave recoil kicks will eject these first black holes from the host halos. And so there is a big problem is can you retain a black hole in the center of the galaxy so early? But this is something that I'm going to leave to mind to talk about later. Okay, the second problem in stellar remnant model would be the atomic cooling halos with pristine gas. The problem is that they are really rare at high ratio. Next you have a photoheating feedback, which must be avoided in order to achieve hyper Eddington accretion. So simulations show that this is possible, but we don't know how realistic this is. And at the end, there is a question of how long the hyper Eddington accretion can be maintained. So you would need to maintain it for some tens of millions of years. But the question is, can you even remain for, can you, can you have it for at least a million year? So and yeah, of course, another thing is that can you maintain this kind of accretion in, in, in the violent environment of the first galaxies? For the direct collapse model, you need a very specific set of conditions for all this to work. And so as I showed in the previous slides, it is very hard to prevent cooling because of the presence of molecular hydrogen, metals and dust. So in any case, these two scenarios would lead eventually to the formation of supermassive black hole by ratio six or seven. And the interesting part is that the merger history that follows at the later at lower ratio should be similar. But before supermassive black hole formation at high ratio, black hole merger histories in these models should be quite different. So while in stellar remnant model, we expect to see plenty of high mass ratio mergers of hundred thousand, ten thousand solar mass black holes. In direct collapse model, these mergers will be rare or even none, since we built supermassive black hole in one go. So this is where LISA comes in, Laser Interferometer Space Antenna. Since these are exactly types of mergers that LISA will observe. So just a couple of important details that I wanted to show about LISA. So LISA will trail Earth's orbit by something like around fifty million kilometers. And the original arm length was supposed to be five million kilometers. Of course, you would desire to have a bigger arm length so you can detect weaker signal. Later, E LISA was proposed with arm length of one million kilometer and eventually two point five million kilometers was approved in two thousand and seventeen. LISA will measure change in the arm length caused by the passage of gravitational wave radiation. And you can think of this value as the strength of the received signal, which is called characteristic strain. The most important thing here to remember is that LISA will be perfect for the detection of supermassive black hole mergers. And you can see that right here, this is a signal to noise ratio map for the proposed LISA only. So this is the ratio of the black hole merger on Y axis. And this is the combined mass of the merging black holes on X axis. This plot is called waterfall plot. And so I decided to focus on waterfall plots for the proposed LISA. Only if you want to think of terms of classic LISA or E LISA. For classic LISA, you can imagine, imagine this waterfall being a little bit wider, while for E LISA to be a little bit narrower. I used the Bobbi package to produce this. And if you want to play with it, you can clone it from GitHub. You can get it here in this link. So what you see here is a signal to noise ratio map for black hole mergers. So these are black hole mergers with mass ratio of point five. And as we decrease the mass ratio, signal to noise reduces. So this would be for mass ratio of point one, for zero point zero one. This would be for ten to the minus three and finally for ten to the minus four. So higher, higher the mass ratio is, the higher these mergers are, harder is to detect these mergers. But I just would like to, 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 to point here that the sweet spot for supermassive black hole mergers is between ten to the six, ten to the seven. You see that even with the, with the, with the high mass ratio, so it reduce signal, you can, you can still detect them. If you go back and you look at the ten to the six, ten to the seven, this is the highest signal to noises. So that's, that's perfect for this mass range of merging black holes. Okay, so let's see what happens when we look at the real black hole mergers in, from cosmological simulations. Where do we expect black hole mergers to place themselves in these waterfall plots? So if we look at the merger history of massive elliptical galaxies or even clusters of galaxies, you have numerous supermassive black holes with a large number of mergers in their history. But if you choose spiral galaxies in the field, then you're looking at the low-density regions of the universe where mergers are sparse. So what does it mean for our study? It means that once a spiral galaxy in the field and its supermassive black hole are formed, there are no more major mergers. So in the case of direct collapse model, you directly create ten to the five, ten to the six solar mass black hole. You let it accrete some gas if necessary. And perhaps this black hole will have a number of extreme mass ratio mergers at lower Rashid. While in the case of stellar remnant model, you first go through episodes of high mass ratio black hole mergers, followed by gas secretion. Sure, once supermassive black hole is formed, it also will have lower Rashid extreme mass ratio inspirals, similar to the direct collapse model. So this is exactly what we see in the merger trees extracted from cosmological simulations. So here we have extracted black hole mergers visible by LISA from the merger tree of galaxies similar to Andromeda galaxies. So this is like Milky Way, M31 typical type galaxy that we see in the isolated simulations. The plot shows characteristic strain for these selected classes of resolvable black hole mergers in the simulation as a function of observed frequency. You see the last days of the inspiral and merger of the black holes. And over plotted, you have sensitivity curves. So this is a sensitivity curve for E LISA and this is a sensitivity curve for proposed. And here we have and here we have merger Rashid and pre-merger masses of the black hole binaries labeled here. So basically, what this means when you look at the plot, this plot is that LISA will be able to observe everything above this line. If this is the LISA we will have in 20 years from now, then LISA will be able to see everything above the sensitivity curve. Okay, so you can see that here there are two classes of objects distinguishing themselves. You can see high Rashid black hole mergers with mass ratios larger than 0.1. These are the merging black holes right here. And you can see the lower Rashid extreme mass ratio merger. So this is the 10 to the 7 solar mass black hole, for example, the one at the center of M31. After a supermassive black hole has formed, it is likely to merge with much smaller black holes. It's just logical, right? So if you look at this in our waterfall plots, these are the high Rashid, high mass ratio mergers. You can see that they all have, so yeah, this is all just from the previous plot, the mergers from the previous plot at the higher Rashid. So you can see that they have a pretty decent signal to noise ratio around 100, 200, 500. And for the lower Rashid extreme mass ratio inspirals that you've seen on the previous plot, I decided that simply there is no point to show them here at all. They are in the LISA sweet spot. So this is that they would be here, right? So 10 to the 7 solar masses black hole at Rashid 0, this is where signal to noise is highest. So in conclusion, how do we distinguish between stellar remnant and direct collapse scenarios? Well, both models predict extreme mass ratio mergers. But only stellar remnant model predicts high Rashid, high mass ratio merger mergers. So if, for example, LISA detects a smaller number of these in similar mass, high Rashid black hole mergers, that would point toward direct collapse black hole model. For those of you who are impatient, because LISA will be launched probably 20 years from now, we should already know a lot about the properties of the first stars and the first galaxies from James Webb Space Telescope. Although that is not going to be that easy, James Webb will certainly be able to detect population tree supernovae, which should give us some statistics for stellar remnant black hole model. Problem is that this is going to be hard to distinguish from high Rashid galaxies and GAGNs. You should also detect a black hole accretion that follows, but the problem will be distinguishing stellar from massive black holes. So we will certainly learn more with James Webb, but it seems that we will need LISA to disentangle supermassive black hole growth models. So I'm going to stop right here. Thank you.
Thank you, Miraslam. So I open the talk for comments and questions. Do we have questions? I cannot see questions. Thank you. It was a very interesting talk. And in any case, for our next generation of gravitational wave detectors. Thank you, Miraslam, once again. And we move to the, we have question, no? If no, thank you once again. And we move to next talk. Magda Smollett will talk about statistic of recoiling supermassive black holes from cosmological simulations. Magda, please.
Hi, thank you very much for this opportunity to present our work. So just let me share this name. Is it okay?
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Maida and today I will be talking about the statistics of recoiling supermassive black holes. So since we already had talks about supermassive black holes binaries and gravitational wave radiation this morning, I will just give a very brief introduction just to point out some important conclusions that I will be using later in this talk. And so when two galaxies with central supermassive black holes merge, black holes will form binary system and then later interactions with the stars and with gas will lead to the binary hardening and eventually to a black hole merger. So newly formed black hole can gain a kick velocity if there is some kind of asymmetry in the binary system, which basically means if black hole have unequal masses or if they have spins. Kick velocity will depend on the mass ratio of the merging black holes and on their spins, both the spin magnitude and the spin orientation. And in the recent years, in last decade, numerical relativity simulations have shown that in some cases, kick velocities can be as high as several thousands kilometers per second, which is more than enough to attract the black holes even from the most massive galaxies. And those attractive black holes can be then observed as offset AGN. In our previous talk, in our previous work, I'm sorry, we have investigated recoiling black holes in analytical and numerical merging remnant galaxies. But I already had several talks about this work. And for additional information, there is our paper. So you can see the method in more details. And here I will just briefly explain the method and the results. So just in few words, we compared escape velocities from analytical and from numerical merging remnant galaxies. They have the same properties, which means they have the same components, the same masses and the same mass profiles. For numerical models, we used N body version of gadget 2 codes to simulate galaxy mergers and black hole addactions. And our main result is the following. So we have shown that supermassive black hole escape velocities in numerical major merger remnant galaxies can be up to 25% lower compared to those in analytical models. Because numerical models represent a better way to describe dynamical processes that are occurring in galaxies with emerging black holes. In numerical models, the black hole is attracted before the visualization process of the remnant galaxy is completed. And because we have, because of that, we have a lower escape velocities in numerical models compared to those in analytical models. And that holds for major merger remnant. And on the other side, in the case of minor mergers, the merger process is simply not violent enough to lead to significant changes to the mass profile of the main galaxy. And because of that, in minor merger remnant, differences between escape velocities in analytical and numerical models are pretty much the same. And so our results suggest that numerical models of major merger remnants would lead to a greater number of offset AGN. And our next step was to compare the numerical and analytical models in a statistical manner, which means using the results from a large cosmological simulation. For that, we used the Illustres 1 simulation. Our sample contains all galaxies with masses in range between 10 to 11 and 10 to 13 solar masses at Rashid 0. And for those galaxies, we extracted the merger trees from the Illustres simulation and then selected only those major merger remnant galaxies that have masses greater than 10 to the 10 solar masses. So once we have major merger remnants, the next step was to populate those galaxies with the supermassive black holes. And for that, we had two different models. In the first model, black hole masses are taken directly from the simulation. So in Illustres, a black hole particle with a seed mass of 10 to the 5 solar masses is placed in each halo with mass greater than a certain threshold, which is 7 times 10 to the 10 solar masses. But as we will see on the next slide, this approach excludes a large number of mergers from our analyses, since it is required that both pre-merger galaxies contain a supermassive black hole in order to black hole merger to happen. And because of that, we also have an alternative approach that allows us to keep all the merger events. And that is to calculate the black hole masses using the local scaling relation between mass of the black hole and mass of the host halo. And also this approach has some downsides because our local scaling relation between black hole mass and host halo mass may not hold for high Rashid galaxies. And some more recent work have shown that quasars at high Rashid have at least one order of magnitude more massive supermassive black holes than galaxies with the same mass at the local universe. And this is some statistics of black holes in pre-merger galaxies. On the left side, we can see histogram of black hole masses populating pre-merger galaxies when black hole masses are taken from Illustres simulation, which is upper panel, and from scaling relation, which is lower panel. So first, we can see that a total number of major merger events is lower than black holes, than black hole masses are taken from Illustres simulation because the great number of mergers of major mergers is taking place at halos that are less massive than threshold for a black hole in Illustres simulation. On the other side, we can see that if we take black hole masses from scaling relation, then we will end up with black holes with lower masses compared to those from Illustres. However, as I already said, this is simply because we use a local scaling relation. And recent work suggested that at higher Rashid, supermassive black holes would have greater masses than the galaxies of the same mass in the local universe. However, I would just like to point out that choosing one relation over the other does not really affect our results regarding the number of offset AGN simply because the kick velocity will depend only on mass ratio of the merging black holes and not on their total mass. And because of that, we just use the local scaling relation. And on the right side, we can see the Rashid distribution of black holes populating pre-merger galaxies taken from Illustres and taken from scaling relation. So once we have major merger remnants extracted from cosmological simulation and also supermassive black holes populating those pre-merger galaxies, our next step was to assign escape velocities to each remnant galaxy. And for that, we used the results from our previous work where we calculated escape velocities for numerical and analytical models of galaxies with different masses. Further, the next step was to calculate kick distribution or to assign kick velocities to supermassive black holes populating our post-merger galaxies. And again, I'm not going to go into too much details about the way the calculation of kick distribution was performed. You can see details in the cited paper. However, there is two models for kick distribution. As I have mentioned before, kick velocity will depend on the mass ratio of the merging black holes and on their spins. So the mass ratio of the merging black holes is something that we have from the simulation or from our model. And for spins, there are two models. In the first model, which is represented with black lines, we choose random spin profile. So random spins are assigned to each black hole that are involved in a black hole merger. And in the other case, which is represented with red lines, we assume that black holes are always aligned with the orbital momentum of the binary and that distribution leads to lower kick velocities. Once we have escape velocities and kick velocities for each of our major merger galaxy, we compared escape velocity and kick velocity. And if the escape velocity is lower than the kick velocity, we say that we have an offset AGN. Of course, this is really a crude definition of offset AGN because we can have a case where kick velocity is just slightly lower than the escape velocity of the host halo. And in that case, black hole will not be completely ejected from its host, but instead it could be set on a bound orbit outside of the galactic nuclei. And again, that is offset AGN. However, in this toy model, we just use a simple definition of offset AGN. And then the next step is to repeat steps 2 and 3 10,000 times in order to employ Monte Carlo method E and to create a statistical analysis of the number of offset AGN. And these are our results. So this plot shows the statistics of offset AGN with two sigma confidence level as a function of Rashid for different models of kick velocity distribution. And for black hole masses calculated from scaling relation on the right side and black hole mass is taken from Illustres directly on the left side. So the first thing that can be seen here is that actually there is a statistically relevant difference between numerical and analytical models. So in each case, number of offset AGN will be higher in numerical models compared to those in analytical models on cosmological scales. However, as you can see, there is a big difference, a big gap between the predictions based on which model of, for black hole masses we are using. So if black hole masses are taken from Illustres, then that model predicts significantly lower fraction of offset AGN that is shown on the left side. that is shown on the left side. And there are two reasons for that. If black hole masses are taken from the scaling relation, in that case, there is a large number of mergers that are taking place in low-mass halos. And lower-mass halos, again, have lower escape velocities. So black holes can be ejected more easily from those models. So that is the first reason. And the second one has to do more with our method. And that is because we are taking masses from the scaling relation, which means that mass ratio will always be in the range between 0.3 and 1, which is our definition of major mergers. So if we go back to the previous slide and look at this plot, we can see that if mass ratio is between 0.3 and 1, we will always end up with high kick velocities. And that also can explain the difference between right side and the left side of this plot. On the other side, if we use Illustres to take black hole masses directly from the simulation, in that case, we have a wider range in black hole mass ratios. But the problem is that at high rashes, at rashes greater than 3, there is simply not enough major mergers in order to make statistical predictions. So this work only serves as a proof of concept to show that there is a statistical difference between analytical and numerical models on cosmological scales. However, we are planning to, in future, improve this method first by using a black hole merger catalog to directly follow black hole merger histories instead of just creating black hole, I mean galaxy merger trees, and then populate those galaxies with the supermassive black holes. Also, we are planning to extend this to use also Illustres TNG simulation. And that would be all. I will stop here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maida, for a very interesting talk, of course. So I open the talk for the comments and questions. If not questions, I have one. You showed the plot about AGN. So some peaks of AGN distribution is over about 1, 2, 3. And then how is your prediction of mergers is matching with AGN distribution, observed AGN distribution as a function of cosmological redshift?
Well, the number of offset AGN would scale with the merger rate at its redshift. But as you can see, right now, our results are really sensitive of the method we use.
Yeah, okay, okay. But you have also some, if I see somewhere about 3, 2 redshift, you have some more. In that case, it's very interesting to see, to compare observed distribution of AGN, number of AGNs as a function of cosmological redshift and what theory, your theory of merging can predict.
Yeah, but I would say that it would be hard since there is not a lot of actually observed offset AGNs enough to make like a statistical comparison with our results here.
Yes, but we have some examples. As DSS, you have some distribution of AGN as a function of cosmological redshift. And then we can see clearly some peaks in the number of AGNs as a function of cosmological redshift.
Great. Well, in that case, that is sure is something that we will do in our future work.
So it would be, you know, it would be nice to see what theory predicts in the sense that we can expect in AGNs that we have some kind of influence of merging before on AGN or in the phase of AGN, as you might be heard the talk of Professor Wang that also connecting some changing look AGNs as possible mergers or closed binaries or something like. It would be interesting to see from theoretical point, from models, your model. So it is a good modeling and it is nice work in any case. So if we have questions, if not, thank you. I would like to thank to all speakers of this session this morning. And we will start again with conference at 2 o'clock PM. So if some of organizers have some information, if not, then see you at 2 o'clock.